Wednesday, March twenty ninth. This is a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. And I will call the Finance Committee meeting to order at seven oh two P M. We have with me in the room Mike Pratt, Peter Whining, Maury Creighton, Andy Oldham, Dean DeHottis, and Tom Parkinson. Does somebody want to call a select board meeting to order?
Anne Harrison, Vice Chair, called a select board meeting to order. John?
Here.
Round. Kathy Ballata. You're. Brian.
I'm right in the same spot, too.
You don't have your name.
Could this be you?
And Anne Harrison's question.
Um. Let's go ahead and start with the first item on the agenda, which is the revised Manchester Essex Regional School District. According to the information I received, they voted to decrease the budget on, so our assessment will now be three point nine four percent rather than five point seven two. There were several factors in their decision to decrease the budget. One was they received the final information in from the health insurer, which was hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than they had originally budgeted. They negotiated, completed the negotiations on the school teachers' contracts, so they were able to place that at where the negotiations came in. And then they had three new teacher retirements, which will leave to savings of ninety one thousand dollars. And they also, there's some grant that allows them to retain one of the positions funded by a grant rather than the budget, which they had. So any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I had a question, and I guess this is from Greg's email, and we had some back and forth, but decided to do it here. I mean, I think I'm ninety nine percent sure I'm looking at it the right way, but maybe someone could correct me. End of the day, if the school department's budget is going up two point eight five percent, right? But the increase that they're giving us is higher than that, three point nine.
Nine four.
Nine four.
Yeah.
And the increase they're giving to Essex is even higher.
Seven point one two.
I mean, logically, that means they're adding to their reserves. Like, that's part of. No?
No, I think that what they're doing is last year, they had funded a portion of the budget out of reserves.
Understood.
And this budget all along has determined that they're not going to use reserve to fund the operating budget. So that's the delta between the two point eight five of what the budget is and where the funding is coming from.
So totally agreed and understood. They're not gonna dip into reserves, but, but I guess in my mind, it's, it's even going the other way.
No.
No.
They, they, they were using, what, for last year, they used like five hundred thousand of from reserves. And so they're not using, but that was included in the budget last year.
Okay.
And so by not using those, the, the assessments to the towns have to pick up that five hundred thousand in addition to the two point eight five.
So with regards to their reserves, they're just looking to keep it flat?
Hi, Becky.
Which, you know, I just got this in the mail today.
Yeah.
So that looks to be around three million, three million plus?
Yeah. But we had approved that originally. So really, the only thing we're voting on tonight is change in the assessment.
Understood. I'm just kind of like laying stuff on the table somewhere, all looking at it from the same lens as Fensel.
Question?
So, yes, John?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of thinking along the same, same lines that Mike is here. The budget before they made this change and they found this other four hundred fifty thousand dollars, they weren't going to use those reserves anywhere.
Right.
Okay, so the number was what it was. Now they managed to save four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they haven't changed that policy. They're still not using the reserve.
Correct.
So it seems to me everything should go down.
Not compared to last year. See, when, when.
Comparing to last year or comparing to what the budget was a week ago?
No, comparing to last.
All right, there. Okay, that's what I did not vote.
Yeah.
All right.
So there's a lot of. Um. The numbers that, Sarah, the numbers that you read off, the two point eight five, those are the percent increase over last year. So all of this is in comparison with last year when they were using reserves. It's not, you haven't given the actual budget numbers, which would show that in fact they are spending two point eight five percent more than last, last year.
Right.
So just, just to make sure that the people are clear on what's, what's dollars and what's percent dollars.
The total budget that we voted on, that was decided on February seventh by the school committee was for thirty million, two hundred thirty six thousand, oh, six, four. Um, the revised budget as of three twenty one, twenty three is twenty nine million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, one eighty. That's before backing out any of the revenues coming in. So that's the gross budget.
At, at the end of the day, the dollars that we're gonna approve now is lower than the first round cut.
Correct.
Right? I mean, that's very similar. Yeah, right. So, yeah. I couldn't reconcile that with the line saying each town is seeing a higher increase. I.
Right, so our assessment.
My, my statement was it was a higher increase over the two point eight because of the lack of use of reserves.
Okay, but the three point nine four should be compared to the, I don't know, what was it, five point?
Correct.
Yes, it is.
It is.
So it's a lower increase.
It is a lower increase, yes, absolutely.
So that the.
Correct.
I get that it's higher than two point eight five, but that's a different number.
It is.
That's the total pie increase.
Correct.
I want to know the N B T S piece and.
Okay, so.
It's a lower.
It's a lower increase. The new assessment for Manchester for operating budget is sixteen million, five hundred thirty five thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars.
So that's, that's two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars lower than what you had approved.
Right.
Okay. I just, your email is confusing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Like, high level, I mean, obviously, we have to vote on the revised budget, but it's kind of a no brainer.
Yeah, it was sixteen five three five nine four. I'm not sure what I said, but.
It's not the first time we've wrestled with this. It's kind of math, but, yeah. And Sarah, to your point, you're right. We voted on that reserve balance for them, but I just think it's important to have it on the front of our brain when we're having these discussions and then even the subsequent discussions we're gonna have. I just, I think it's important.
Yep. So the decrease between February and March for Manchester is two hundred and eighty three thousand, six oh five. Any more discussion?
Well, one, one thing, i- if we approve this as it is, this budget, can we use the savings, the two hundred and eighty three, to fund our portion of the athletic field as opposed to Article sixteen, which says?
Let's not discuss that now. Let's just discuss whether we're going to approve this budget and then discuss what we're going to do
Okay.
with the savings.
Okay.
Okay, instead of muddying the waters.
Yeah.
Because that is a more difficult conversation to have.
Yeah.
And ask a follow on, and you might say the same thing to me, which is fine, but sticking with the athletic fields, I mean, is it too late in the game to, you know, try to suggest that?
I'm sorry. I was trying to shut it up, which is. Um. So let's wait on the conversation about the fields until after we've done this budget.
Well, let me just ask the full question and then, let me just ask the, what's that?
It's not too late to.
No. Let me just ask a little question, then you might give me the same answer you just gave. Is it too late to recommend that they use reserves to pay for the fields?
I think that's a, if I may, separate discussion.
Well, isn't it related to the budget?
No, it isn't. The fields are a separate, we're talking about the operating budget.
Right.
Right.
The fields are.
Okay. So can we close the discussion about the budget then? And then who wants these other topics?
Okay.
So we got a motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve the Manchester assessment for the the Essex Regional School District in the amount of sixteen million, five hundred thirty five thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars, which is a decrease from what we previously two hundred and eighty three thousand, six oh five. Will he move?
On a second.
Twenty seconds? Um, vote from the Finance Committee. Oh, any further discussion? Vote from the Finance Committee. Mike?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Sarah, well, just.
May I have a motion from the Select Board? So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solace, we'll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace? Kathy Ballata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Jake says yes.
So the next item is to discuss the fact that we have this two hundred and eighty three thousand, six oh five. Um. And are we gonna make any other budget revisions?
I mean, I think, to me, it's very black and white, and we, like, the tax rate, I mean, and I could spend quite some time explaining why I think that is.
Well, I agree with that. I, I think that, um, we have we have an enormous amount of money in reserves. We have three point nine million. We've got water and sewer retained earnings of six hundred and fifteen thousand. We've got money in the fire apparatus fund of one point three million. And then we have fiscal year twenty two reserve for encumbrances of three point three million. Now, some of them, I'm sure, have been since spent, but I think that's something we need to look at in the summer, to make sure that if we're carrying money, for instance, the D P W thingamajig that hasn't gone up. Um.
We call it a facility.
Design. No, 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 no.
This is a tent.
Oh. Um, and I, and I think that that's one thing I've touched base with Andrea on is, is a desire to discuss that stuff um, over the summer to kind of figure out are we moving stuff out of the um, encumbrances in a timely manner to encourage people to either spend the money or not request money if they're not going to spend it. Kind of type.
And then to add on top of everything you just said.
Yeah.
Half of the town's budget is to the schools.
Right.
And now the school is sitting on three million dollars.
Right.
So there's like a double buffer. Right? I mean, there's quite frankly, more money that needs to be sloshing around. I mean, and I know everybody on the FinComs saw this, I think, the Excel file, but I can certainly hand it out to Board of Selectmen. So I asked the town, I asked the town to do a five-year lookback on forecast to actuals of what we target to have in our reserve balance versus what actually happens. And it's it's eye popping. Now, you could argue it's the good way, because it's more money, but again, it's more money, right? It's, you know.
So what the chart shows over eleven years, the fund balance grew by page with point nine, you know, nine hundred thousand. So through eighty two thousand dollars, eighty, eighty two thousand dollars a year on average. Eleven years.
I think we're talking two different things.
Yes.
Talking two different things.
Two different things.
Talking two different things here.
We're talking the variance versus what was estimated.
Right.
And for fiscal year twenty three, it was over a million. For fiscal year twenty two, it was almost nine hundred thousand. For twenty one, it was one point seven million. And for twenty, it was four hundred and twenty five thousand.
I understand.
That's, that's what we're talking about.
That's the annual delta, not, not point to point on the fund balance. Those are two different things. So, for example, let's just look at one year. Let's look at fiscal twenty twenty three, right? You look at that bottom number, let's call it one point one million, right? So, you know, we did the forecast, the estimates, revenue, property taxes, local estimates, expenditures, right, everything. And let's say we had targeted to have a reserve cash balance that equals ten percent of the annual budget. It was that plus this.
Our S, if I understand what you're saying, it is our estimating skills could use some fine tuning.
Well, that's. It's, it's a little worse than that, to be honest, because we're intentionally like underestimating revenue. Right? And, and there's this thought.
Overly conservative?
Well, there's this thought that if we underestimate revenue, the revenue's gonna come in where we know it will, because like, this is pretty stable revenue. And then, oh, this is good news, because that extra cash that came in, which again, it's not it, right? Goes down into reserves. And then the following fiscal year, oh, we can use that for CapEx. And the problem is, number one, we lose a year on it. Because if we forecast it correctly, we could have used it a year earlier. And number two, we should have the option whether to use that for an operating expense or a capital expense. We shouldn't get forced into using it as a capital expense, just because we underestimated revenue. And then the cash came in that we knew was gonna, right? And now we're told, oh, if the cash comes out of reserves, it can only be for CapEx, when you actually have to, you have to do a second round analysis and say, well, how'd the cash get in there? In other words, if we issued a bond, and that's how the cash got into reserves, well, then sure, you can't take bond proceeds and use it for salaries. But if it's operating revenue, which it is, because we haven't issued a bond for the town in quite some time, I guess the other way would be if you sold capital, that would be the, right? But we haven't done either of those two things. So this is, this is operating cash that's in there.
Well, and I, I take a slightly different twist on it. I don't want to discuss the operating versus capital, but the twist I take is by accumulating extra money in the reserves, we're not being particularly transparent. And I think that if we have large capital projects coming along, we put it before the taxpayers and say, this is what we need to do. This is what it's gonna cost you. Is the benefit of the project worth the increase in taxes? And, and I just think it needs to be, you know, I mean, the P F As are coming along. Yeah, they're not, I hear it's gonna be a while, but anyway, you put that in front of the taxpayers, I would assume they'd approve it. D P W garage, I don't know if they'll approve it. Um.
To, to say the same thing a different way, if we're underestimating revenue by five hundred grand, just to have it come in, go into reserves, and then pull it out for CapEx later, we could have just voted in that current year to spend the five hundred on a CapEx in that year, right? Like, we couldn't, like, that's actually the more straightforward way to do it.
Anne, what did you want?
I just want to point out that they, the town votes on all the capital expenditures, wherever the money comes from.
Yeah.
But they don't vote on the tax rate.
Well, they do by the, by approving the appropriation. Sure.
Not specifically the tax rate.
They're told what the increase is gonna be. It's in the booklet.
They vote on all the things that.
Make it.
Certain.
Right.
Yeah.
But I don't think that people at town meeting look at this and say, well, because some of this is coming from reserve, I can, I can vote for it, because it's free. I don't think they're that naive.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
If they vote for.
That far either.
Excellent thousand dollars for, or, or a study for the D P W, they're thinking of that as their money that's being spent.
Right.
But it's not as transparent as it can be, and I think most people don't understand how much cash the town's sitting on and the school district's sitting on.
So, so I think what I'm hearing from a variety of folks here, and I agree with the transparency concept. And, and I've been talking with Greg about, you know, my first year sitting in and learning about how all this process works. It would be nice to have a forward-looking, more forward-looking, um, high-level financials around these big expenditures that we know are coming, right? And a rough plan of where we think we want the money to come from, right? Um, and I'm talking out there, like, at least twenty, if not thirty years.
That's what we're talking about, right, once we get the facility study.
Well, so I agree with that. I agree. However, I don't think we need to wait to do a draft of that, because I think Greg and, and Chuck know enough that we could at least put together a framework that we can agree on to discuss further when we get the actual numbers from the facility study to plug them in, but I think it's worth our time and effort in the month of April and, and into May to at least put together that framework, because you're right, Mike, we're sitting on a lot of money, okay, that we don't need to sit on. And, and more precise project planning can help correct that, as well as a larger, more forward-looking framework for these big expenses that we know are coming.
But I think you need the study to have more definitive information.
You do.
We don't even know where the D P W garage is going to go.
I agree with that.
How can you?
Well, I know, yeah. To Kathy's point, though, that's just, just getting a start. Doesn't need to rely on the hard information that gets plugged in, but if you, and we know certain items which will have to be.
We don't know the priority, though.
That can come later, too, though. That can come later, as long as we, as long as we have an idea of, of where we think we're going to need to be putting resources. We start out, then plug in the actuals.
It's about refinement. You know, you start at the strategy, you, you put together the framework. You, I, I think Greg and Chuck are very knowledgeable about the useful life of some of these assets we're going to be talking about. So you start with that framework, and then as the numbers get clearer and clearer, you refine, you refine, until you're ready to take something to the town. And I would certainly take something to the town in the summertime, um, early fall at a high level, just to get their thoughts and help them understand there's some big dollars coming your way, and we don't want to, you know, wait till the last minute at town meeting to start to talk about this. Let's start talking to them as we, as we go along. Take them with us on the journey of this very expensive discussion that we're gonna be having over the next year. That, that would be my recommendation.
I have a question about the facilities plan.
Yeah.
What does it say about P F As?
I don't know. I haven't seen any.
Well, you know, identify that as a, as a looming big cost. You know, given.
But it, it, it doesn't have it yet.
No.
This is something that showed up in the last.
Mark.
Uh, yeah.
Well.
And what, what, what I'm trying to say is that it's all well and good to do all of this advanced planning, but things happen.
Right, I understand.
And, and it's convenient to have some funds available to reduce the shot when something bad happens.
So that's a different discussion, which I also agree with you, that we should have. I think there's two things that figure into what a reserve should look like. One is how much you want to save for future large expenses that you know are coming. The other, what you're talking about, Anne, is risk management. Those are the pop-up things that happen, okay? And, and, and managing your risk is, is also something that we haven't had an enterprise risk discussion.
And, and further to that point, it's one thing to have five hundred grand in the bank, so that if the ambulance, God forbid, craps out, and you need to buy one quick, you can just write a check. That's one thing. If we're talking about a water treatment plant or a, you know, we're talking millions and millions, I gotta believe, right? Like, seven figures, if not eight figures. So my point is, that's gonna require, obviously, a bond issuance to fix a big problem. I, I, I don't want, nor should we plan to just keep socking away cash and cash and cash, because maybe we're gonna need to spend eight million dollars on this big project that, like, who, like, you know.
Uh, one of my, one of my questions, not being a finance person, um, yeah, I'm, 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 and I'm not sure how well that's gone, uh, is, is, does having the, the cash reserve and stabilization fund, how do those impact our rating and our ability to get bonds?
So that's a great point, because that comes up a lot, and like, it's been said, which is a false narrative, that, oh, when you have more cash in that reserve, it helps your bond rating, right? And here's the problem with that. I looked at our cash reserve balance, and you can go back eight, nine, ten years, and we had under five percent, we had like four and a half. Guess what? We were triple A. That's the highest it gets. So, right, if we were triple A at four and a half percent, obviously, we're gonna be triple A at ten percent or twelve percent, right?
If that's the only factor.
I did.
You didn't. But, but, and I'll, but, you're right, you're absolutely right. So I'll take it a step further. So the point is, it has much less, much less, if not zero, to do with how much cash in the bank you have. It has to do with the predictability of cash flows, your ability to make an interest payment, the ability to make the principal repayment at the end of the bond. And guess what the good news is? For a town like this, all of those things are about as good as they can be, right? Like, what's been our bad debt rate? What's our default rate? What percentage of people don't pay their property taxes? Even in an oh eight, even in a, you know, it's, it's miniscule.
I also did ask Andrea to ask that question of our auditors when they come in on Ableton.
And Greg, I, I'd like to get your perspective on those questions of questions as well.
So a few, a few general comments. Um, I, I don't think ten percent is sitting on oodles and oodles of cash. I think that's a prudent number. And we'll be a little under ten percent for next year. So I don't think we're being irresponsible in our management of, of fund balance. I am fine with spending it when it comes in. My biggest concern is that you've done a double hit on the capital. You've taken away three hundred thousand in, in taxation, and you've taken three hundred thousand away in local receipts that used to go in capital. So that's a six hundred thousand dollar hit in one year. I don't recommend doing that.
But could, can I ask a question?
Taking any money away, all we did was raise the forecast of local receipts to a more accurate number, to be able to spend it in the current year.
You're not spending it on capital. You're not spending.
We will spend on capital what we decide to spend on capital. Now, where it comes from, as you know, every year, we budget three million of annual revenue towards capital. And then sometimes.
It's not annual revenue.
Sure it is. Where does it come from? Exclusions.
It's, it's a combination of taxation and fund down.
It's revenue in one year.
Right.
Some year, right?
It's not revenue in that year.
It doesn't come out of the money tree. I mean, it, it's out of current year. We top it up. We might pull a, a million extra out of the fund balance, and that's how you get to four.
No, no. Getting to three requires fund downs.
Okay, how about this? At the end of the day, if we're not issuing a bond, where does the money come from? It has to come from taxation. It has to come from revenue, either local receipts or property taxes. There's no bond.
I have, my philosophy on taxation is that it's sort of slow and steady. I don't like ups and downs. I think the taxpayers, that's my personal philosophy. You have, you can have a different perspective on it. I think it's better to have three, three threes, or two and a half three, rather than a zero, a three, a two and a half, a two. I just think it's
That's where we disagree.
Or even feel to keep it at a steady rate.
It's, it's just, it's, it's not accurate to say we're taking any money away from CapEx.
I want to.
Kathy answered the question.
I just have a, um, a question. Um, the receipts that we are not gonna put in the reserve, that we're gonna move to operating or float operating, that you're referring to, Greg. I don't recall the rationale for that decision. Was it just because we don't want the reserve to grow too large, or was there a, um, an operating risk we were specifically trying to cover?
No, when we did budget.
I just forget.
When we did the budget, we felt that the revenues that had been projected over the last few years were unrealistically low.
Yeah.
And it made more sense to have accurate revenue projections, because they're not volatile.
Agreed.
And so that's what was incorporated into the budget.
Okay, what I'm not understanding is the comment that we're increasing revenue and moving that money to cover operating, because quite frankly, I think we need to look at controlling our operating expenses, and I don't want to be throwing more money over there either. So I'm, I'm trying to understand whether or not there was an actual move that I missed. Okay.
It, it's just. We increased the revenue assumption for local receipts.
Right. But we're gonna lower the taxes as a result.
Yes.
Okay.
Lower the taxes.
Yes.
But it's the same expense budget.
Got it.
Either way.
Okay, I got you.
Basically, historically, every year, basically, historically, every year, we were intentionally. Basically, historically, every year, basically, historically, every year, we were intentionally underestimating revenue and local receipts by. Somewhere to three to five hundred thousand, even though we know that that number is like this. And then it comes in, surprise, surprise, except it's not a surprise. It goes down into reserves. Then we vote to take it out of reserves, but we can only spend it on CapEx, like it's.
Uh, Greg, what is it you wanted to say?
So again, I'm I'm, I don't have any beef about spending the money the year it comes in. My concern is the only reason you're keeping the tax rate at two percent despite the fact. That a school budget is going up four percent, which would normally translate into a three and a half percent increase in our taxes. The only reason we're able to keep that at at two is because we're taking three hundred thousand more. In estimated receipts and that's applying with the operating budget. That's the only reason that you're able to do that. And to me, that is shortchanging capital or town operating for school budget that has to go up. To sacrifice town operations for a school budget that legitimately has concerns and needs. Increase the tax rate for the school budget.
But but I look at it differently, Greg. I look at when creating a budget to determine what your expenses are. What your operating expenses are, what your capital needs are, and then you determine how to fund it. And what's been done and that over the past years is instead, let's assume a tax increase of two and a half percent. And then figure out how much we can spend.
And and so what I. That's the FinComs, that's your job is to do that, to look at these. That is what the FinCom is for. Greg has a different job. We have a different job. We don't always agree on the final. Item that's put before the townspeople to vote on. So I I just, I. I think we're kind of getting down a bit of a rabbit hole here and I I might. Be the only one who thinks that.
I think this is the conversation we need to have. So and I I but I agree, I don't think we can all have it tonight. But this is the exact conversation I do wanna have with not just us, but ho- hello. We don't have a school committee rep here and and they need to be included, I think, in this conversation because they are the biggest part of the budget.
Okay.
Right? But I don't think we can have it.
Let's let Andy speak.
Yeah, well, just, just that, you know, it's certainly a relevant conversation just because, you know, we're we're talking about a philosophy. Of how we budget our operating capital expenses and and I. I understand your philosophy, Greg, and I understand what we're talking about instead, which is. Find what we need it, make the taxpayers aware of what the need is and if it ends up being an override that year, then don't be it. That's kind of the position we're in. Um, versus, you know, kind of storing away the nuts and 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 having it available, you know, to kind of even it out. Um, and I think, you know, the vote that we've taken, at least in finance committee this year is, is to. Ask for.
I got a, I got a question. Has if we've looked at the revenue side and so that's always been where we come up with more money and it's kind of balanced out the school issue. Has the cost, is cost of vary, cost variation been a factor in all of this or has have the have the expenses come in pretty much on budget? Every year, so you don't have to look at.
No, they've been under.
Okay, they've been under as well. So it's, that's adding to the delta as well.
Correct, that's.
All right, so you got, you got the revenue thing, which is being underestimated. And you really can't manage that too well. You take a guess and you see what the story is. Costs, you can as month to month, you can manage some of that, I suppose.
But, I mean, you're forecasting eighteen months ahead of time.
Yeah, I know. I understand. It's it's still, it's ill hearted, but but both of those factors are contributing to this. Okay, and the other thing that I see here is there's a philosophical issue about ten percent versus five percent. You know, or six percent or some other number. I mean, I just happen to look and see, yeah, it's been all of it was up at sixteen, seventeen percent. A few years or so ago. Now we're, now we're a little bit under ten.
But remember to add on top of that, that half of the town budget is the school budget. And so if the school is also sitting on.
I know.
Then, you know, our ten percent, I would argue, is irresponsible if if we can see that the district is gonna sit on ten percent or more of their own. Because, because half of our budget is that budget, so.
Kathy mentions on the discussion, uh, ten percent versus six percent, five percent, that's part of this discussion.
And the intention was to discuss those items on April thirteenth. When we did our uh.
The app.
Review of the.
After town meeting.
Yeah, after town meeting, where we did a review of the budget and then looked ahead as to what we wanted. To pull together in advance for purposes of the fiscal year twenty five budget. Um, and to have a discussion about the philosophy regarding reserves at that point in time.
Could we invite our Manchester School Committee FinCom people to that?
Not, not for the April thirteenth. That's an internal. That's internal discussion. I I I. You're too broad if you try to bring everything in. Together.
And I just. The school department is very separate. We could bring them in for information. But we do not have the right to tell them how to run their school.
That wasn't what I was suggesting. I'm talking about collaborating and this town, I do think, has a right to. Communicate boundaries um that we feel we need to. You know, live by and and I don't think it hurts to collaborate with. People who own the biggest part of the budget. So it's it's not about dictating, it's about collaborating and I. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I'm not saying dictate to them. I'm saying more if if I have to go in with the assumption that they are gonna maintain a ten percent plus three million.
Yeah.
Then, okay, I can't impact that. I can't dictate that maybe, but then I can. Change the town reserve to offset, right? I mean, it's it's a bit of a left pocket, right pocket, right?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Anne.
In order to. Remain competitive in future salaries, school budget is all is going to be. Increased by more than two and a half percent every year. Um, they they do study um, other, other districts. Um, with high standards and I think we should keep high standards, but maybe you don't, um. So their budget is always going to cannibalize the town budget. Um, unless we have overrides.
It's not just salaries, though, with them. It's also the the whole, the the um, the packages, the unions, the.
If you look at what they did in this year's budget, they have had overestimated their expenses by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, I know why.
I don't care, but they overestimated, so.
If you have an, I'm sorry, I I'm interrupting. I'm shut up. I have information.
Yeah, but I don't wanna have a discussion of the school department budget tonight. That's outside of the boundaries of this meeting or we'll be here till midnight.
I will just say, having watched this for a bunch of years on the school front, about eighty seven percent of their cost structure is labor. So you've got roughly two hundred employees. They have different salary structures, but many of them are affected by COLA. And the many of them are affected by basically step and rank and that's just the way school systems work. So when you look at that salary increase in the near area of four and a half percent net roughly. And you figure eighty seven percent of the budget is labor, that's how you get to this number. And, you know, their mechanism for getting rid of that number is getting rid of people. So they're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place a little bit on it. This is, this is the business they're in and I think we all should be glad we're not in that business. Because it's pretty damn complicated, but um. I I agree with most of what you said, but to Sarah's point, part of how they found money in the budget was just they had a really high estimate. And then, oh, surprise, it comes in lower. I mean, that that. So that that could be a timing issue and that's an issue we wrestle with here in the town too. You know, we get right up to town meeting and we're not quite sure what the healthcare budget is. So if we were to go to our vendors and figure out a way to move those estimates back. So that we knew what our healthcare and the school know what their healthcare was in December. We wouldn't be juggling this around between two town meetings a month apart in April and May respectively. And I think that's probably something we ought to be talking about. Or from our town meeting out, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'll give the, I'll give the benefit of the doubt. It could be that or it could be intentional, right? It could be the forecast. I, I mean.
I'm gonna let Anne jump in here because there's, there's a a lot of going along with what she has information on. We don't have to go on. But.
They had a forecast of a twelve point nine percent increase in health insurance. They didn't want to find themselves after town meeting unable to pay for their health insurance. That was not a bluff. That was the estimate that they got from their insurance broker. Um, they were also carrying a significant amount of money to handle the um. Uh, some of the union contract. Um.
Which we chose not to do.
In the town budget. We chose not to do in our budget, um, we might have had a fall town meeting. We may yet have all time meeting where we deal with our.
Exactly.
And it's just more awkward if the school has to come back for a second.
But they can pull out of the reserves too, Anne.
You got three million bucks there.
Right, and they have two point one million dollars in things that shouldn't be done at the elementary. Essex Elementary School that you could save for the next two years.
Right, and look at the bar chart. Look how high it's been for ten years. The lowest it's been is one point seven million. That's an emergency when it gets down to one point seven. I mean, it's not like they've come close.
We've had enough on this, I think. We're we're not here to. Do the school budget and tell them how to do.
No, but the the information helps. I I I do think, but I I agree. I don't think we need to keep on.
I guess I've forgotten what we're discussing at the moment.
We're discussing if there's any other budget provision.
Yeah, so the way I see it, you know, we have in print at the town meeting a three percent increase and. Now, all of a sudden, we have two hundred eighty four thousand savings on the school. I don't think the town's gonna flywood saying we're gonna eat that savings and keep it at three percent.
Right.
Um, I don't, I I agree with with what we've been doing as a committee to try to keep reserves down. So what we have, maybe there's a compromise. Um, maybe we can say, well, we do have some expenses. And go to the two and a half percent standard and come up with a hundred forty two thousand, you know. If we could maybe combine the four hundred thousand that we have for Brook Street. I've heard that isn't gonna happen next year, that it's gonna happen the year after, but maybe if we can combine some of this with that. We can eliminate the need to finance the the new field and just pay for it in this budget. So like, so to the town, I say. We can't control. We have a uh.
The school will determine whether a bunch of funds want to be issued.
Well, just our, okay, so can we pay for our portion with some of this money? We have actually, we were gonna do the field. Why not just spend it on that?
If the, if the school issues a bond, we will be assessed our portion of that bond.
Right, so we can't just use the lump sum. Can I make a motion?
Sure.
To apply the two hundred eighty four thousand, the reduction in the school budget applied to the tax.
Decrease.
The decrease.
I second it.
Peter seconds. Any more discussion from the finance committee? I'll take a vote. Mike.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Tom.
Yes.
And Sarah Bouches.
Okay, um, I make a motion, that same motion to apply the two hundred eighty three thousand dollars. Uh, to lower the tax rate to percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Roll call vote. Ann Harrison?
No.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
No.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says no. Three no, two yes.
So what is the intended process at town meeting?
Um, that's a a put forward by the. FinCom and that you all proposed that and it's not supported by the select board.
Well, no, I think there has to be a motion made at town meeting.
The 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 practical way to implement one policy or the other. Um, the one vote or the other is is in your capital budget. So if you keep the capital. Sources of funding as it stands in the in the book. Then the end result would be to to lower the tax rate to the two percent. Assuming that when we set the taxes in in the fall, you you. We adhere to the estimated receipts that have better part of the budget so far.
They don't follow what you just said. Could you say it once again? I'm I'm not following.
So if you have the budget book. If you look at article five. Page one. Page thirty. Yep, I'm there. So this, so fun funding sources, yep. Okay, so this. Apparently, everything has a fund balance, um, except for. Basically, except for the um, pipe replacement. We we were putting.
So this is the police car proposal and other, this is a.
This is the capital budget.
I understand. This is capital budget, but it's in your email to us. I believe there was proposed to apply it to what would otherwise. Be paid from reserves.
He's suggesting that instead of fund balance, some of it's funded in taxation.
So that's how you, that's how you implement these two different.
Thank you. I I I now follow you. I I.
But you would, somebody wouldn't have to make a motion on town meeting floor, isn't that correct?
So there has to be a motion to move article five, either as prison, either as printed or modified. So that's decision number one. This is gonna be presented as printed or not. And then if it's presented as printed and the select board wants to amend it. In order to, you know, have a tax taxation that comes in at three percent and you would. Change the funding source on a couple of these items.
By a motion on town meeting floor.
Correct. Either way, it has to be a motion.
Okay.
So we we already have a a motion just as a result of the. School budget changing, right?
That that article six. Article six, the article, it's the 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 article in the warrant doesn't give a number.
Yeah.
So the motion will provide that lower number. So when when article six is moved, the motion will contain that sixteen point five three five number. Which is the rolling number. So, again. Finance committee would say move article five as written. Select would use to decide if they want to.
Put a hold on someone. No, it would have to be a motion.
Make a motion to amend it.
Right.
To 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 identify, I I identified two that came up to that.
And then the the finance committee would need to make a recommend recommendation on that amended motion.
Excuse me.
Alan?
Yeah, Sarah and Becky, thank you. Ordinarily, the the motion under article five, the capital budget. Is made on behalf of the select board and and normally, uh, in it, and I think. It's never happened before that the select board and finance committee had different uh, recommendations on it. Normally, it's second. Seconded by a member of the finance committee. I think the way to define the choice for the voters would be to present the motion on behalf of the select board. With. The changes, in other words, with the change from fund balance to taxation for whatever items it makes sense to do that. And then for the finance committee to make its contrary recommendation and perhaps put it in the form of an amendment. I think that'll define the issue in a way that the voters will understand it.
Thank you, Alan.
So, I'd break just to clarify the two hundred eighty four orish thousand dollars. Does that go to the bond balance?
We said two eighty three. No, 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 I just, I I'm I'm just saying that that if we need. We're not, okay, sorry.
I'm I'm not specific to the number more.
Yeah, the taxes will be decreased. Oh, no, the taxes will be increased, though, that less will come out of the reserve fund.
Exactly, right.
So that two eighty. That two eighty-ish number would be. Two hundred eight thousand plus would be. Not coming out of the. Right now, one point seven is slated to come out of the fund balance to fund capital.
So you, you need to, in, in other words, the main motion would identify changes to the article, to article, to the Article Five funding sources. As printed in the finance committee pamphlet. Sufficient to reduce the fund balance draw by roughly two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars.
So the select board. Doesn't make any change. We just put forth Article Five as is.
No, no, not as is.
No, you, you would, you would move Article Five with changes. Changing some fund, some items that are currently fund balanced to taxation.
And then the finance committee would need to.
Move to amend that.
Move to amend. To what's in the booklet. Okay.
Is that what the? Select Board wants to do? Is there a motion from you to adopt that?
We did.
I know you turned down the other motion, but. So is that passed by majority or?
So a motion is needed to specify which of the capital. Why items you wish to alter the funding source. I recommend sixteen, which is the fire engine fund at two hundred thousand. Then the police cruisers at eighty eight two.
So that's increasing the tax rate more than we originally.
Yes, yes.
My fraction.
Did you, did you pick those? Excuse me, Greg, did you pick those? Cause the math happens to work here because. Yeah, we're, we're still doing the, we're, we're getting all this stuff.
Correct, it doesn't change what.
No, it's just where the money's coming.
Where the money's coming.
Understood.
No, I just picked those because those were the two items that.
I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have another agenda going.
No, those are the two items that were closest to the, the two. The two eight, you could. You could pick any other combination, have it a little lower, a little higher, you know, whatever.
We do public, if we do the fire engine and the COA, that's two seventy five.
If you did the.
COA van replacement.
Which number?
That's right, okay, sorry, that's. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna go a little lower, pick the two hundred and, you know, there's a, there's a. Lots of choices, fifty thousand, you could go two fifty, you could go two forty five. I, I, I would just limit it to two because I think it's simpler.
So Greg, I know you're not gonna have these numbers top of your head, but you know. I would like to know what that delta is in terms of targeted reserve balance, you know. Both ways.
Yeah, I did that math. It's a, it's.
Already did it, okay.
Nine point six versus ten point three.
Nine point six, that's percent.
Percent, yeah.
What about the dollars?
It's, it's two hundred eighty eight thousand.
No, I get the delta. I'm saying the two gross numbers.
Well, it's on the spreadsheet.
It's on the spreadsheet. Instead of three, three point nine. It would be three, uh, four point, four point two.
So do three nine or four two.
Uh, 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 round, no.
So the changes, um, with the select board, um, John, do you have any thoughts on? Those two, public fire and, and, and replace.
No, I, I'm, I'm okay with those, hitting out those two.
Yes, if you wanted to just one, you do have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar item. This sidewalk. Storage. It's a little less, but that's close enough.
Sorry, could you use the item number on the Article Fives when you're referring? Number three.
So number three is, is a two hundred fifty thousand dollar number. Item sixteen is a two hundred thousand dollar number. An item nineteen was, was eighty eight two. Originally, I, I was looking at sixteen and nineteen. Um, if you wanted to just do one line item change, you could focus on the two fifty. Sidewalks and drainage.
Greg, is it safe to say that the, uh, if you go to the. And sixteen, that money just being parked into. Replacement fund.
That's the fire apparatus fund that once that two hundred is added will be one point three.
One account packing it somewhere else as opposed to.
Still like this one.
Actually spending it on the sidewalks.
You're still collecting.
But I'm sorry, what you, what the taxpayers looking at. Just kind of clarifying.
Ann, did you ever thought on something? Um. That, that, that we're likely to spend the fire engine fund in the very near future, yes. That, not, not at this.
I think, I think.
Not at this town meeting, but at the next.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be parked for a year.
No, but it's not. And again, I think it is an aspect.
Okay, um. I'm gonna go through the rest of the boards, then I'll come back to you, Dean. Kathy?
We're gonna be spending this money. It's only a matter of where, and I, I agree with the philosophy of not taking it out of reserves. Okay, not, excuse me, increasing the taxation.
Say that again.
Um, and I support the Fincom's position of not overtaxing the residents to fund the reserves, so.
Okay, so.
I don't have any recommendation to move, change the funding source because I'm happy with it.
Okay, so because, but the, the board is going to make this recommendation. You choose not to.
Right.
Put something for it, okay. Ann?
I, I'm happy with this. Sixteen and nineteen recommendation.
Okay, as am I. Dean, did you wanna say something?
I was wondering if we could, um. Put it towards the, um, water pipe replacement. And use the money to reduce some of the water rate increases that we've been having. Um, but.
I think that's. Some discussion for you. Yeah, that's, and, and. Yeah, that's, those, those great. Yeah, well, that, that comes from. And I, I think that's a. Different. At this point, um. All right, um. May I have a motion? To, um. Make these changes to taxation.
I move that we change the funding source for number sixteen and number nineteen from fund balance to taxation.
Second.
Okay, uh. Roll call vote, John Round?
No.
Um. Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
No.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Okay. All right, so we will make that, um.
So that'll, that'll be the, the main motion. And then the finance committee can. Move to amend. I, we, by going back to what it's, is how it's presented in the, in the booklet.
And do I have a motion from somebody to do that?
Motion to do it?
What you wanted.
Questions.
Normally, if, if the book, if the book was actually written. According to this proposed project. So right, right now, it says that both boards recommend what is written. But because it's presented, because of this. The cascade of events was the school budget was changed, so now you're changing at least some members of the board have changed their opinion as to what to recommend on here.
Um, Alan? I.
Yes, Becky.
I just wanna let you know that, um, Ann is going to, um, move that for the select board.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And who wants to second?
I'll second.
Who's that?
And, and let me ask, do you want me to state the motion for you or do you want to state it yourself?
I would like you to state it if we would.
I will, I will state it, but I'm gonna leave it to you to explain it. And, and I, I just wanna say, I don't know how long we just spent on this topic. It's, it's gonna require both the speaker for the, the, the select board and for the finance committee. To be very clear, to convey this issue to the voters in a way they'll understand. Especially if you can keep it to two minutes each.
Oh, I have a five page PDF.
Already?
Yeah, so. This, all right, this is gonna be presented. Differently than what we voted. Um, and the question is, is. How are we gonna react to that? Are we going to make a motion to amend it? Back to paying for fund balance?
And another alternative, Sarah, is to. Is to explain the differences between the finance committee and the select board's recommendation. See where the vote falls on the motion. And if it's defeated, then make a motion to approve the, the budget as printed, capital budget as printed in the warrant. I mean.
What revised?
Let me, let me, let me think about. Or let's, let's you and I both think about which will be an, an easier and simpler, um, path to follow. I'm open to either one. I'll obviously do whatever that, you know, you wanna do on behalf of the finance committee.
My sense is to do it upfront.
Okay, well, I, I think the way we would go then is that. Is that. I will state the motion for the, the select board motion. I will. Allow Ann to explain the reasoning for it. And then I would. I can either state the amendment for you. Or allow you to state the amendment and let you, obviously, the explanation would be yours, whichever way you go on that. So do, do, would you, would you prefer that I state the amendment or do you wanna do it?
I can state as printed in the warrant. That's pretty easy, right?
Yep.
Just clarifying, the, the discussion is that. Based on our discussion and the votes we all just took. The fine, Fincom is happy the way it is printed in the warrant, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, so the, I think what Alan is saying is that the select board make their case for changing it because the only thing incorrect now on page thirty is the select board. No longer, does not recommend approval of this because there's a change they're gonna recommend.
Well, they don't recommend. Select Board's presenting, is presenting this, representing something different. And the funding source for sixteen and nineteen, so.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Which therefore affects the tax rule. This is the key statement that has to be made. What, what are the two choices for the way Alan, I'm just trying to get square.
Well, one was. We. We say we don't recommend what's being presented.
Yeah.
And explain why and let, let it go to a vote.
Yeah.
I would rather upfront say. I've moved to amend it as printed in the warrant. And explain why. And have the vote on the amendment first and then the vote on the main motion.
I think it's much easier to understand.
That's kind of my sense.
Okay, I mean, in either case, someone from the finance committee is gonna like.
Yes.
State our, yeah, okay.
And I, I assume that that would be you, Sarah.
Yes. I already planned to do it.
Yep.
No matter what happened here, I was gonna explain our philosophy about reserves.
Well then, if you're gonna be speaking, then whichever way you think would be easier. Like I would have thought the other way, but I'll defer. So I, I think as long as if there's, um, some. Explanation that. Hey, full budget rundown by this two hundred eighty thousand. That money is used to reduce the tax rate. Um, we ask for this year. Versus just riding along.
Just one, one last detail, um, or two last details. I'll need. A seconder from the finance, from the select board for Ann's motion and a seconder from the finance committee for Sarah's amendment.
Brian is the seconder from the select board.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
And who was that? I couldn't tell.
Andy seconds.
Okay.
Yes, Maury.
I have a mechanical question.
Yeah.
At the very end of town meeting, we always have. An article.
Yeah.
To adjust. Are we gonna need to use that for this?
That's only if we have to go to a two and a half percent overlap.
Correct.
Because of the excess levy capacity, we don't have that issue. Isn't that correct? That's what Article Twenty is. That's to avoid going to.
Yeah, it's, it's better to get this dealt with in the first four articles and then forget it. Three hours later, don't wanna be there.
That's, that's certainly my preference too.
Yes.
Yes. Could we cover agenda items one through four? Of our meeting here?
Say what?
Could we cover agenda items one through four of tonight's meeting?
Um, the information we don't have, Greg, is what the tax rate will be. With this change. We have what the tax rate was before the school budget decreased, but this number is different than what was in the school budget. So what, how, what's that gonna do to the tax rate?
So basically, you're looking at two percent or three percent.
No, I'm asking for the numbers.
Like, is it exactly two point oh or three point oh? I would imagine not.
Page three in this book that everyone's gonna have.
Oh, you want the tax.
Says the tax rate will be ten point seven four, a two point ninety percent increase. And what will it be if? The select board thing is passed and what will it be if Fincom thing is passed?
So that's, this is what it'll be if the Fincom version. Is approved.
What?
The ten point seven four.
No.
No.
It will go down.
School budget still.
I'm sorry, I haven't got, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the select board number is higher than what? It's, it's a higher number.
That's around here. You're talking four thousand dollars. Um, thirty million. That's not, that's not even a, a tenth of a percent.
So the two rates are ten point seven four or some number lower?
Yeah, your number, I can, I can do that right now. Your number is gonna be. We'll have, I'll have Andrew there.
Okay, yeah, if she can send that to me, because I wanna speak to that.
Yeah, no, I can.
But I think. I'm a hundred percent with you, but I think two point oh, three point oh are gonna be the.
That's, that's the.
The more easily comprehensible.
So on page, on page five where it talks about the financial highlights. Uh, estimated tax increase.
So that's.
For both the town and the school. Does change if.
Yes, so that five point seven is no longer accurate.
Right.
That five point seven is now three point nine.
So I'm just, I think, do we have inserts then?
No.
Or?
We're not gonna have inserts.
Okay.
But you certainly could explain that on the floor. And that would come up. Either in an overview or at the, the Article Six for the school.
Right, and that should actually be, I mean, shouldn't the school committee?
They do or not?
Say it again?
School, but committee should be explained about.
Right.
Yeah, so I did put it in my, in this paper. That. It's the, the numbers in this report for the school. Are incorrect based on their change. So, and I, I talk about the five point seven going down to three point nine.
Challenges is that our Article Four and Five come before their Article Six.
Correct.
And so, I mean, one way to just think about strategically is if we look at our report and think about the most visible things that are. and think about the most visible things that are in error. Highlight, just strategically say, what are the items that are the variances that people are most likely when you talk about? And hit those.
Right.
Probably in your presentation, Sarah.
That's what I was planning on doing.
And you've set the groundwork for when you go through Article five. Go back and forth, and then people understand when they get to Article six and the school comes up where we are. Hopefully.
That makes sense.
They're not all running for the hills at that point. Well, I think it's letting the voters have a little more say, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's not a bad thing.
Okay. Right. The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty four CPC budget, the impact on the state match decrease. Um, we received new reports that I distributed.
Hey, let's, when did that, I didn't see one. Okay.
Deckel Brian sent, Jack Brooks sent them.
Okay, I, I don't recall seeing that.
Well, apparently, there's a concern, there was a concern that because of the registry fees are down.
Yep.
That the match from the state will be lower than what was assumed in the original CPC budget calculations. So Jack, or somebody on behalf of Jack, prepared new spreadsheets which show that if, I think it was at thirty four percent or something like thirty four percent. If it were to go down to twenty five percent or twenty percent. He's saying that there's still enough money in the CPC budget to cover the CPC items that were approved.
Could someone forward those to the, to the slideboard?
And.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, can they spend money that we haven't? The town meeting hasn't approved? Meaning if their, if their match is down and they're going to spend more to meet their commitments, can they do that?
They're not, they're, they're not spending more.
So no, the answer is no, and no, they're not doing that.
Oh, so what are they doing to make up for the lack of?
Have less, less held over for next year.
There'll be less in their fund balance. They have smaller number of charity funds.
Okay.
Fund balance.
Um, what this is saying is if the match were only twenty five percent, there would be a hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred remaining after they paid for these projects. If the match was only twenty percent, there'd be a hundred and sixty thousand four hundred remaining after these projects.
Oh, well, I, I, I had, I had misinterpreted where the, where the match comes into the original. I understand.
They, they include the projected state match in the projects.
We were never planning on spending all.
Mike, maybe we need an updated spreadsheet that is, includes all the different reserve buckets that we have. But I think there's more than that two we talked about.
What, what are the CPC fund balance? That on the sheet?
It's a good problem to have, but a problem.
Well, it's a good problem to have, but it's.
It depends on how the match comes in. It's, it's, like she just said, estimated for.
My balance says, say, January first.
This year, right now.
Yeah, right now.
I think it's on the top corner.
Yeah, I thought it might be on that sheet.
Ninety-three thousand.
Okay.
That's which fund out? That's the CPC.
CPC, yeah.
That programs have an obligation from the state. It's very, very.
It is variable.
It used to be a hundred percent, I think.
You started out and it started, yeah.
Only have you accepted the three percent. Which we never did.
Yes, we did. Not three percent. We were at three percent when they were putting in the Donovan fields, the fields up the Mac. The Donovan property, it was up to three percent to be able to afford that. And then it was dropped down the next year. We're three percent one year. Okay. Okay. I don't, haven't seen your guys' agenda. Were you through your agenda?
Uh, the next thing we have is four point three point two three annual town meeting discussion. Are you all done? Where's that?
Um, I think that, um, what I was including in my discussion of Article four was to talk about the staffing changes, the health director and that the dispatch, moving the dispatch operations on three one enabled us to, um, hire the three new police officers and two new fire, firefighters and say that we've increased police officers for within the last two years and the firefighters for within the last three years and to point people out to the detail that I provided in this booklet.
Does that include percentages? I think, I think the percentages are that it's important to give that, not just the number of.
What do you mean percentages?
Um, that increase, for example, to the fire, fire is a thirty, you know, what, thirty three percent or a thirty percent increase? Isn't that?
Oh, for staff.
Oh, okay, right. I just, I just think percentages is very helpful.
Percentages, okay. Um, yeah. I can include that. And I was also going to. Yeah. And I was also going to, um, explain that in March, the finance committee approved a ninety-five thousand dollar transfer from its reserve fund um, to cover the excess overtime in the fire department for this year. Um, and that we, it, the budget includes funds to reinstate the call firefighting unit. And then I was saying that, and we hope the public safety and other departments will work together to make this a success as it, as it, as it is in other surrounding towns.
Um, does anything need to be said about fire equipment? Fire rolling stock, anything about?
That's not in this budget, so it's not appropriate to speak to it, I don't think. Um, I know it's a point of contention, but yeah, but it's, since it's not in the budget, I think I need to, um, and I was planning to state the changes, um, since the booklet was published.
I'd be surprised if somebody doesn't bring it up. But I think you're right.
That's for Alan to deal with.
Yeah.
And, and I will.
Um, and then Article five, I was talking about our philosophy of the reserves, and I'll send out to people what, um, and that reserves, um, the purpose of reserves is for emergencies and that we feel that, um, we should be taxing people currently for the expenses we're incurring and not stockpiling our reserves, um, and that I say that there will be large capital expenditures, there will be large projects and there will be, and that, um, at the point in time, a project needs funded. We present it to the taxpayers and let them determine whether the benefit of the project is just, justifies the housing price.
And something else you might throw in there, maybe yes, maybe no, but in addition to cash reserves for CapEx, you know, since we've been cash funding CapEx for so many years, are the town's debt has actually been decreased. So if you think about cash and debt on a net basis, it's even.
Yeah.
Even better.
Better. Right?
Yep. And then I also was, I was thinking that, um, I was saying that the majority of the capital this year is for the sixteen inch water main on Pleasant Street. Um, and then was going to say, we also hope that if cell signaling technology project is approved, um, that it will increase the tax base, um, so it will be less of an impact on the tax rate in future years. Kind of put that out there.
Suggested timeframeing the cap increases like in a ten-year window. Some period of time. We anticipate over the next five or 10 years, significant increases in capital expenditures.
Okay.
So that people aren't saying, well, this is a twenty-five-year plan, because it's unfortunately not.
Okay.
So Sarah, just, I, I know that the, uh, most representation during capital, which is Pleasant Street Water Main.
Yeah.
So because of the PFAS situation, that may change. Because one option that we looked at, the PFAS is actually up in the water going to Lincoln Street.
Well. Yes.
Back up to gravelly and having one treatment plant facility for both water sources. So if that's the case, um, it changes what we do on Pleasant Street.
So is the idea to wait on Pleasant because if that has to be done, then join the Pleasant and do both?
Correct. But we're not ready to make that decision this.
Where, where, is there another chunk of water main that they're going to target instead?
Yeah, check working on that now.
So you want me to be not specific with respect to Pleasant Street?
I, I think it's better not to be specific at this time.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just say water. Water and sewer infrastructure. And yes, I need more than two minutes, Alan.
I'm not surprised, Sarah.
Alan, I need less than two minutes.
But you can, you can, you can share with Sarah then.
If, if Sarah is going to be presenting the benefits of lower reserves, it would be nice if you talked somewhat about the benefits of maintaining a stable tax rate and many other things that I'm sure Greg can tell you about. All right, great. I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay. Next item is reviewing minutes.
Go ahead.
Do you guys have one minute or more?
We have another thing, but go ahead and do your minutes and.
Oh, okay. So do I have a motion to approve the two sets of minutes?
We'll hit so.
Sixteen, February sixteenth was like a display of results without any discussions. Shouldn't we have a little bit more to the minutes? I mean, they, they said it was a truncated minute, but why, why, what, there was no explanation. Um, when Gail emailed it, she said that they were, there were some reduced minute, but there was no explanation why.
I'll be really honest, I'm going to stay and I think there's just look at the minutes, so.
If the meeting minutes went to sixteen are abridged.
How were you?
I think it's the standard of national state law for meetings. Is that something we should discuss, or? Is there something you think's missing or?
Well, there was no discussion. It was just a summary of how we all voted.
Oh, what do people think?
Wasn't that the meeting where we were kind of running through?
Yeah.
Budgets, sort of one by one?
Yes, we were, yeah.
I honestly don't remember whether there was any sort of meaningful discussion.
Maybe there wasn't. It just seemed like at some point, yeah.
Well, just, was there something specifically that you remember or felt should be in there that's not in there? I mean, if that's the case, then that's worth the discussion, but if not.
I started reviewing some of my notes and just felt like the, they weren't really minutes. They were really just a summary of how the vote went. It just concerned me that, that someone would be looking at what happened in this meeting and that really is, doesn't say anything other than how everything voted, which is what you see in the town report.
I, I guess my comment is that's probably one of those meetings where we were just kind of
Yeah.
voting on this department. Putting on that department and, you know, I mean, like, neither works or it doesn't.
Yeah.
So it means, it means the department.
I didn't take issue with what was said, just that.
Yeah. I, I don't have an issue with it unless, like Frank says, there was something in particular that felt.
I started to list stuff and then I said, well, you know, it, yeah, it's the, it's the whole style. So I figured I'd just mention.
I mean, if it's style, it's one thing, but if you have specific points, then maybe.
Yeah.
Coordinate with Gil.
I can, I don't know.
So do we want to hold on the February sixteenth ones?
Uh, I can look at it a little bit more.
Okay, sure. So do I have a motion to approve the difference from February ninth? And Maureen seconds? Ready to vote? Mike is staying in. Peter?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Sarah will just. Um, so the next meeting dates are April third at six in the project room.
Where is that?
I have no clue. It's in Memorial School.
That's, yeah, but the school's pretty big.
I think, I think it's on the first floor, where you go into the main lobby, right to your right.
Okay.
There should be a third grid.
I'm pretty sure that's the project.
And then we have the April thirteenth meeting that I've sent you the agenda for, uh, which is joint with the select board. And then we need, um, Dan Sherman can't make that meeting, so we need a meeting in May. Have Danny Sherman come in. And I sent an email around and did not receive any responses.
See, you have some idea when he can be here?
I didn't get that information.
I'm sorry.
You think that's too late? No, okay.
Stick to a Thursday if we can.
Yeah. I mean, I think I've thrown some dates out there for people to consider. Fourth. Eleven.
Sorry, Sarah, remind us again of the dates you put out there.
April three, April thirteenth.
Five, three, and five.
No.
April thirteenth is a joint with the board selection.
Right.
You're thinking about the Dan Sherman.
Yeah.
Okay. What was the dates you proposed?
May fourth, May eleventh, May twenty fifth, June first, and June eighth.
The meetings in May are fine for me. Any of those dates work. June does not.
Okay. Anybody else have an opinion on this?
What were the two June dates again?
First and eighth, but he's saying he can't do those.
Can't do the eighth, but I could do the first.
So May fourth, eleventh, what did I say? Fourth, eleventh, or? No, not the eighteenth, twenty fifth.
Or the first.
We have San Diego one.
The fourth does not work.
Okay. Have my June first.
Can we ask him about the eleventh through the twenty fifth?
Yeah, that's all.
When we start with those and then you can back up to the first.
Is everyone else okay on the eleventh or the twenty fifth? Okay.
I have no conflicts.
Graduation.
Graduation. Andy, what is it? Graduation, first. I back a lawyer. Talking Cooper, or?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for finance meeting? Make a motion to adjourn?
Return.
Peter moves first. Andy seconds. Mike?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah motions.
Can I think, um?
Yeah.
Right, select board, we have, um. Item number six, four point three point two three, annual town meeting discussion points. Greg?
Right.
Yes. No, I didn't.
That's what we're throwing.
Sorry, um, Mike, thanks for the info on that, yeah.
Is anybody else signed in as host?
You wanna give, um. Me co-host, and then you can leave?
You're not in, are you on Zoom?
Mm-hmm. I'm there. Okay. All right, I am co-host, so, thank you, ma'am.